Testing one, two, three. This will be the November 28th, 2018 City Council Regular Meeting.
Everybody ready?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order. A regular meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, November 28th, 2018, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Councilwoman Gibson for a moment of silence and a pledge.
Please rise for a moment of silence. And for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, open up for citizens' comments, and let me explain the rules for the citizens' comments. First, I'll take citizens of the city of Satellite Beach, and then I'll call up non-residents. This is for non-agenda items. Non-agenda items. So the mic's open. Please state your name and where you live, for the record, please.
My name is Lois Felder, and I'm hoping to be a resident of your fair city once you give a certificate of occupancy to Oceana. So my money has been tied up with them, so I consider myself already a resident for about a year. But I'm here to speak about safety. And right now, I'm wondering if I should just stay where I am and maybe try and sell my unit at Oceana, because if you notice, I have a mobility issue, and I'm concerned about safety. About six months ago, I switched my primary doctor to be very close to Oceana, and I just saw her today. And when I saw her in October, she said, "You must lose weight. You must walk." She says, "I want you to walk to my office." Well, that's all good and well, but the sidewalk ends at Grant, and her office is one building north of the Chabad at Roosevelt. The only way I can walk to her office is by crossing the light at Scorpion, going as far as Grant, and then walking on A-1A. There is no way I can safely walk. And should I want to attend a service at Chabad, that makes life even more difficult because there is no street signal to cross A-1A to get from the west side to the east side to walk back to Oceana safely. And right now, we also have an issue of light bulbs. I don't know who needs a fundraiser and a GoFundMe for light bulbs, but three bulbs were out on the west side of the street. There are no lights on the east side of the street. It is pitch black. And I could never get across a major highway, A-1A, by myself without having a signal that says how many seconds are left for crossing and so on, and to call attention to the fact that I am with a walker. So I'm here to say, please do sidewalks so I can walk to my doctor. I cannot walk on uneven grass, and I will not walk in A-1A. It is way too dangerous. I don't have to tell you about how dangerous it has been this month. So, thank you very much.
Let me, um, let's stop just for one second. Let me close the podium just for a second, because I'm sure other people are here about the A-1A. So let's have a little discussion on where we're at, where we've been, and that might answer a lot of questions for people here. The A-1A project, let me start and then where I missed you.
Yeah.
The A-1A project, we worked with FDOT for quite a long time to set the project up. Sidewalks were designed into the corridor, both on the, finished the east side and west side. So hear me out here. Where there is public access, where there's right-of-way, excuse me, forum, the reason that there is not a continuous sidewalk on the west side is, we don't own the property, not us, FDOT, the state has no more right-of-way on the west side. It has to be acquired, that right-of-way. And that's the reason that that sidewalk does not continue. We are working on that. I know a few, we've asked them through countless meetings. I know myself, a lot of the council attended, Courtney and I have been up to Deland half a dozen times on the issue. Crossing blinking yellow lights at the, those new crosswalks that have been put in. We got a letter the other day. They are in the process of finishing that up, and we are supposed to get those yellow blinking lights to help crossing. We got the letter, what, last week? So that part's in. As for the light at Roosevelt, or our crossing light at Roosevelt, can't tell you how many times we've requested it for that light to be there. I know our city manager this week has worked on that extensively. We've asked FDOT that we really don't think there's a need for another study. I mean, there's a need for a light there. We understand it. All those things, and then the one other thing was said about the lights that were out. I got a letter from Allen that the lights were replaced this week.
Yes.
They were fixed. They were out. Again, those are not, unfortunately, those are not city property. That's FDOT. So what we do is, when the lights are out, we contact them to have those lights replaced, which the report that I got is they've all been replaced in the last four days, three or four days, I think they were.
It would have been recent.
Yep. So yes, they were out, so we know that. The issue with the traffic light there, we are definitely working on that. We have asked over numerous years for it, but we've kind of stepped up that here in the last few weeks. And the other light that is my pain in the neck, and I, and the city manager hates me because I always say about this, is the light at the end of this street.
Yep.
It's the only turn, left-hand turn on A-1A from, um, from Indy Atlantic to Cocoa Beach that doesn't have an arrow for a left-hand turn. Their comment to us was, "We need a study. There's no need for it." We've heard this way too much. So I can tell you that we've written letters, they've gotten letters and calls from citizens, and hopefully it will speed up the process. So that's what I know as of now. Courtney, anything to add to that?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that there's a differentiation between the crosswalks, the mid-block crossings that we just put in. Those are, like pedestrian islands is what we call them. They're not, right now, they're not lit. They're just crosswalks where people can, I know you see a lot of people darting across A-1A, and they stop in the middle of the bidirectional turn lane and just sit there and wait for the next break in traffic to get across the other side of the road. So we decided to put in these pedestrian islands, sometimes they're called. Those will now, in the next two or three months, have flashing beacon lights. When people want to cross, they'll go push a button, and lights will flash so people can stop. Those are different than the traffic light, that's a full traffic light that we're requesting at Roosevelt. We've been requesting that since 2013. The DOT did say that it was warranted, that meaning that it was necessary. They just could not program it into the resurfacing project that has just been completed. So I just want to let you know that your emails that I've been seeing come through have been incredibly helpful in getting a lot of this into their top bosses' face, I guess you'd say, in front of them, and that it's been prioritized, and I think they are starting to understand the importance of getting this done. And a, DOT, when they say something's done fast, it's like, you know, two years is fast to them. So that's, it's just their world. It takes a long time for them to program money to get some of these things done. And sometimes when it's, when the item is designed, they can move money around faster, so we're looking at those options as well with them. I also wanted to make sure that you understand that there is no option of increasing the lighting on A-1A, because we have turtle regulations on A-1A that we just can't increase the lighting on the east side particularly. We can look at some west side improvements, which is what, it's not actually DOT, it was FPL. That's their responsibility. It took us about, what, three days to track that down? And so they're, they installed new headlamps, and that's what took a while to get that in, because they took them off for turtle season, and then now they just replaced them with LED lamps. So, um, so that's been done, but that's done, it's been done as most as it's going to get done on A-1A, from a lighting perspective, okay?
Okay.
So, so we have, right now, we also have a request in, we've requested as a city, three times so far, since I've been working, I've been the city manager for five years, to lower the speed limit on A-1A. We have had some requests. There was a resident who lives on Roosevelt that witnessed the accident. It was very horrifying to her, and she has been pretty instrumental in writing continuously to DOT to get the speed limit dropped on A-1A. So I wanted to let you know that, that there's other people that you may not know that are also involved in trying to get some of this done. And DOT will, hears from us every day, all the time. We work with them on all kinds of projects across the county, and I can tell you that when they hear from you, it's a lot more impactful. So I would advise to not let up on your emails. Maybe make a phone call when you can, when you think about it, to tell your personal story. I thought your personal story was really well, you know, articulated, and they would love to hear that. They need to hear these individual stories, because that's how it puts the prioritization in their heads and gets things done that way. So that's my recommendation to you, and I really appreciate seeing all the emails going through. It really helps us in getting it done, and I can lean on that and say, you know, it's not just the city staff that wants this, it's not just the city council, it's our residents that need this as well, and they're requesting it individually, so.
Thank you. And the one thing on the third, the speed limit, Courtney's been here for five years. I mentored this. Mayor Schechter in there. We've been trying to get this speed limit changed on A-1A for a very long time, because we feel we're the only section that's in a town that is 45 miles an hour. Cocoa Beach, it's 35 miles an hour. And it's been a sore spot. I mean, it's something we've been trying to go for, for 20 years?
30.
30 years, you know? So, you know, hopefully, maybe they'll listen, but we definitely do work on this. This is something that we've, you know, A-1A is important to us. The crossing is very important to us. Our beach accesses, we own somewhere around 18 beach accesses. We own 40% of the beach, and people have told us they want safety on A-1A, and they want the beach and so forth. And I can tell you, it is our priority. We just work with an agency that doesn't work quite as fast as the city.
They have a lot of laws with regard to right-of-way acquisition. So even us, if we go and acquire the right-of-way, which we do everything a lot faster than they do, if we didn't acquire it in the same regulation and follow the statutes that they are required to do, they won't accept the right-of-way. So it's a different world that they have. They have a lot of liability as a state agency that has that much asset, so they have a lot of laws in everything they do. So they will not, they could not put sidewalks in with this project if they didn't have the right-of-way. So where you see the gaps in the road is because there wasn't enough, they didn't own enough property to put the sidewalk in. So the study that they emailed you guys back about, that's what they're doing right now. They're doing a study to see where the sidewalk gaps are, how much right-of-way they would need to acquire, and they're doing it from Paineeta all the way down to 192. And that's the study that's being done right now. So when you hear them talk about that study, that's what they're talking about. Unfortunately for DOT, these studies take about a year, and then once the study's done, we have to fight for that money to be acquired, to be appropriated to right-of-way acquisition and design. And that's, you know, that's the next stage that we're in.
Okay. I will reopen the mic if I, if we've answered your questions. Thank you. I'll take the next speaker.
Thank you very much. I must preface by saying thank you to every one of you and everyone here at the city. I've lived here, I'm a resident. My name is Tvi Konikov, the rabbi of the Jewish community center Chabad. I'm here with my wife Shalamet and friends. And it really is due to your dedication and incredible work to make my life and my family's life and the synagogue an incredible, beautiful experience. I really, this is just an opportunity to preface with that, and I really appreciate that you work so diligently in making Satellite Beach a beautiful place to call home. But I must say that this last death that we experienced in our congregation really hit us very hard. This was a resident of ours, this was a member of ours, Dr. Bernard Epstein, those who are not familiar, was killed on a Friday night walking out of our synagogue services. It's not the first time that we witnessed someone who was hit, also walking to synagogue. And I had to walk to the hospital on Friday night to go fetch those people. And it breaks our heart, and we want to do whatever we can, and we're right behind you. And if you tell us that this is, these are the steps we need to take to get action done, we'll do it. But if I may, and please don't take this hard, I'm a rabbi after all, I have to preach to someone. And really, the truth is, my law is, I'm first preaching to myself. And it's really, I guess it's a certain tradition, it's found in the Bible, that if someone was found dead, it's right in the Bible, that if someone is found dead, the city closest to that corpse has to take responsibility. Now, you might say, "Well, it's the FDOT, it's the FPL, it's this one or that one." We have a tradition that if you find something that is a flaw in someone else, we believe that God didn't let you see that flaw if you didn't have, and I'm talking to myself now, a tiny bit, a sliver of that flaw, otherwise God didn't let you see it. The bottom line is, a death happened in our city. And I like to tell my friends and my family back in Crown Heights, Brooklyn, that I moved to a beautiful place where dolphins, turtles, the environment, and everyone is jealous of me. We have such a beautiful family, and people like to come and the visitors. But recently, when we're telling them about some of the horrible things that have happened in our city, rape, suicide, deaths, and things of this nature, they wonder, "Where are you living? What's going on?" And for sure, everyone, there is responsibility, and those that need to take the responsibility for each one, but I'm just hoping, and I'm just appealing to you from the bottom of my heart, even if it's not our responsibility, even if indeed we're not responsible or any of, anybody or any organization or the city of Satellite Beach, let's do whatever we can to make this not only a beautiful city, but a safe city and a place where we can walk. And one last thing, the reason why I got up in this, there's a lot of things that were mentioned, I really do appreciate you doing everything you can. There are some items that need to be addressed, and I'm very happy that they're thinking about a light at the corner of Roosevelt and A-1A. There is some technical issue that those who are observant will not walk over to the light and press the button on the Shabbat. So especially on the Sabbath, we're not allowed to touch any button. If somebody else on the street is going to do it, we're not even allowed to tell them to do it. And I'm not getting into how we're going to solve those things, but even a light would suffice, I believe. A regular red light would suffice. They can wait for the cars to stop, and they'll be able to go out. Because we are growing, and the amount of people that come to the synagogue and the things that we do on a Sabbath and people that are walking and move, more people are living and are moving into the area, it really is important that we have a safe place for them to get back and forth. So really appreciate for you to give me the time, and much success in your incredible work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and please do us a favor too, with your congregation. Like Courtney said, please write the letters.
They are.
Be partners with us, and if not, you know, they hear us and sometimes put blinders up, because they always hear us complaining.
Right.
So we would appreciate all the help we could get to work together to get this accomplished, because I can tell you, we've been working on that light for a long time.
And I just wanted to say too, is, you know, they may be a state road, and it might be FPL's light, but we're still the advocates. So, you know, yes, we will be, that is our job, and that is something that's our responsibility, and we are definitely taking that very seriously. But I also wanted to say, there are things that we can do for the Sabbath with that light. We can put it on a timer for those particular times. So we will work with you to do that when we get the light ready to go in.
Wonderful.
Because that's some, that is something that can be done.
Well, thank you so much. Really appreciate everything.
Thank you. Mic still open?
Good evening. I'm Maryam Shapiro. I'm a resident, and I also live on Roosevelt Avenue and also attend the Chabad Center. And we also cross the road on Saturday afternoons. I have a young son, nine years old. I also see other people going across the street to the beach. Yes, we can write letters. Is there something that we've done on research that other small cities have done to speed up the process at all? Anything other than writing a letter and making a call?
The biggest, the best way, you know, they really listen to political pressure. So we're, you know, meeting with our delegation, and if you would like to call, I can send that over to you all. I'll send that out to the email that's been going out, but to our legislative delegation. So, you know, Representative Altman, Senator Mayfield, those types of people, when they get that ear, they'll start calling over to DOT and saying, "Hey, this needs to get done." And that definitely speeds things up. So that is something I'll send out to you all, the phone numbers and the addresses and the emails of those individuals. Okay? That's a great point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill Jacobs, 241 Prince William Court. I'm glad the rabbi went before me and took most of the wind out of my sails. And I also appreciate all the comments. I'd like to add, it's not just, if you know Prince William Court, it opens up right onto Roosevelt, very small, one block of townhomes. And I would say, not only on behalf of my Chabad family, but my actual family, when my college-age children come home and visit, the first thing they do is walk to the beach. My neighbors, who are some elderly retired and up at 6 o'clock in the morning every day, walking to the beach. The children who cut from Avocado and then Avocado again to ride their bikes to school, the school's on Jackson, also go through Roosevelt. And Roosevelt is a through street. It's a cut-through street, as we would say in Jersey. So you have all that information. The one last piece that I would ask about, because we spoke earlier, and I'm on the same page with Mrs. Barker as on just about everything except the right-of-way. It makes no sense that, and this may be a question for FDOT, and I'm happy to pursue this with their project manager, they need to first determine the rights-of-way. To my knowledge, is that what I'm hearing, from the Paineeta to 192, along the west side of A-1A for purposes of the sidewalk?
Do they know where their right-of-way is? That they did that survey during their...
In 2013.
Resurfacing, yeah. So when, where you see that there's no sidewalk, it's because they didn't have enough right-of-way. And the study that they're doing right now is basically planning out the sidewalks and then determining how much right-of-way they're going to require.
Have they not asked any of the property owners along the west side of A-1A?
No, they do their studies first, and then they program money, and then they start acquiring right-of-way.
When they were taking, exercising their easements and taking their right-of-way for the widening, you know, the right-turn lane, for example, that is...
There was no, there was no right-of-way or easement necessary for those things at the time.
Okay. And are they going to discover that there's a problem because of the culverts that are periodically in front of?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So can we get ahead of that in anticipation of...
That's why they're doing that study.
That's why they're doing it.
Well...
And remember too, when this road, going back in history, it was a two-lane road.
Until eventually they took...
So what happened was, they used up, they used up their right-of-way. And when they did this repaving, and we asked them many times to put in sidewalks, the only place they could put them is where they had right-of-way.
Which, which they did.
Which they did.
But there's a lot of sidewalks that go nowhere.
They have to acquire, and there is a process to go through that they're going through now, to put the sidewalk, to acquire that land.
When this was first discussed, five years ago, and all the other times they've been up here after the last two hurricanes, I don't recall any business owner being asked. I'm not aware that there was an inquiry made.
They're not going to, they're not going to try to acquire right-of-way until they figure out how much they need and then program the funds for it. And they, they have a whole team, it's like a whole department that does that. The project manager that we've been emailing, she'll be able to explain the process better to you, but it's, we understand the process in the realm that, I know enough about it and how difficult it is, to know that we would likely not acquire it for them because of the difficulty that's involved with it.
And if the city were to inquire of those property owners, or a group of citizens were to require, inquire of those property owners about, if you had an opportunity to put a sidewalk in front of your building, would you be willing to do it?
I would.
Would that work? Would that help?
It's different, because the DOT's not going to accept an easement. They have to have right-of-way. And that means the property owner would have to relinquish part of their property to the DOT. That affects their setbacks of their property, could make them non-conforming. So there's other legal things that we have to do on a city side to, for their property to remain legal in the world of property and zoning.
And this is all commercial property?
That's correct. Which makes it more challenging sometimes, because sometimes the owners aren't here. So they're, you know, they're companies, and it can be challenging.
Okay, so...
But it can be done.
If we did, if a petition were prepared, sent to FDOT, maybe it wouldn't make them move faster, but at least they'd have record, on the record acknowledgement that property owners are willing to do this?
Yeah, absolutely. Willing sellers or willing donators are the best things in the world. I mean, that's great. So yeah, like any, anytime we can get assistance in that, that's great. But the DOT is going to do that on their own, like they're, you know, so it's just their world.
And it was interesting, because when this project came through here, we had to battle for these blinking yellow lights, because the way the state works is, this was a repaving project. There's this guideline that it's repaving. Through the efforts, Courtney knew some people at FDOT and so forth, and we had the meetings, we got these crosswalks that will be eventually lit, put in. But that's normally not done under their heading, which to me is crazy, but just the way it is. It's a repaving project.
No, I understand the politics.
We screamed and yelled on that one.
Yeah, so we got them. But, and one of our big things has always been to make the city connected in sidewalks and as through streets. That through street, we did a project there, we made the sidewalks wider because we want to encourage citizens to walk and move around our city.
And that happened very quickly.
That's our street.
That's the difference.
That's the difference. Do we want? Absolutely.
But thank you for saying it was fast.
No.
We're going to work on more, I guarantee you.
I was quite impressed. I moved in in October of 2015, and I want to say, within a few months, we had sidewalks.
Thank you. Mic still open for anybody? About this segment.
Getting in there, council members, city lips, and citizens. My name is Leo Smith. I'm a 30-year resident of Satellite Beach, currently residing at 455 Hamon Avenue. My comments are focused on the city's ordinances and permits they have without regard for reasonable setback limits and hike limitations for allowed oversized recreational vehicles to be stored alongside one's house, towering over neighboring homes, patios, yards, essentially destroying a tranquil... destroying a tranquil and privacy so valued and entitled to enjoy. And I can echo the rabbi's sentiments about how much we enjoy this town and those sentiments that I know you all share too. These are not boats, these are not small campers, these are not pop-up trailers. These are 40-foot-long, 14-foot-tall, eight-foot-wide vehicles that weigh some 18 to 20 tons. These cannot be hidden or blended into our residential community, our surroundings. These vehicles, additionally, these vehicles have dark tinted windows that tower over our privacy fences. They're this high. Such that they stare down right into adjacent homes' bedroom windows, go onto their patios. Having this just inches from the property line feels very creepy and strange in these days of high-tech privacy invasion and all that can go on. Mayor, you know I've been directly impacted by this, and my wife and I kind of had a war between inside-out by this issue. We're not sure if we're going to be able to cope with this abomination of equality in our life. To help, I'm requesting the council's support to have our codes and ordinances be reviewed and revised to prevent this from turning into a problem throughout the city, and it already has to date. No Satellite Beach resident should have to cope with what my wife and I have to live alongside. Before going over some of the pertinent points, and these are the things that might be helpful, and there's a little picture tour, real quick, there's four photos attached. First one's from the front yard, showing my neighbor's capes. Second one's from a side yard, third one's from a bedroom window, the fourth one's from a patio. As you review, you'll now all feel the half of my property angles. Can you see my concerns? And I'm sure it's not first time that I've been borrowed. But my research leads me to believe that the city, in trying to provide a reasonable storage of RVs on-site, has in fact created the ability for individuals to store very large, very heavy campers and motor coaches. I don't believe that's what the goal of our codes are. The relevant codes is written, our problem, R is a B problem, besides those RV owners that we don't care about the neighbors. Just for the record, I don't own RVs. I have stored off, you know, off-site, commercial storage, selling, only cost $20 a month. Kind of wrapping up my findings, the, and I brought a lot of problems. These aren't going anywhere, trust me. But these are the pavers. These are the crux of the problem. These are what everybody finds, everybody drives with. These are great access for all of them, pavers. You look Google them, anything you do with marketing, they call them interlocking pavers. And there's another technicality, there is another type of interlocking paver out there that bears in this, but these are the common pavers. Everybody's buying, everybody's replacing the driveway with a piece of one of those that concern the residential neighborhood, not interlocking pavers that you'll see within the... Like I said, these are the problem. These common pavers can be installed to support the very heavy, large vehicles, depending on what they put underneath them, how far an interwork that's on the ground. Exempting, well, we're exempting these pavers. If you use these, you're exempted from property setback requirements. Both allowing these large RVs to fit into the side yard of many of our homes, and the pavers further giving them support, you know, the physical support to store them on and pull that thing in and out, in and out.
Certainly, I'd direct your comments today.
Instead of in the ground. So, the secondary finding is not considering these common pavers and subject to the setback requirements allows, allows one to build and remove, modify the driveway to bring it right over to the adjacent property line. Also, those five-foot setback limits we've got, don't matter. The people are working around them. So, what I've done is I've attached, you know, for further hope that we can do this conversation in other forums, when it comes to the process, I'd like to read on the first one out of code. And that's under section 30-650 on page six, fill in the second paragraph there. It's all about RVs stored in residential areas. If concrete, interlocking pavement, asphalt, or similar hardened surface, just to be used as, you know, storage or parking an RV, a permit must be required, or shall be required. In addition, the requirement is such at 30-536, shall apply, in your form.
Yes, sir. I'll give you a couple more seconds because the buzzer went off. It was five minutes. It's, there's five-minute time, so just, if you would, wrap it up.
Yeah, I am. This is a good requirement that is written, that it involves both a permanent and section 526, which requires that by set back one, that's good stuff. However, our building official does not present this type of interlocking paver complex or all commonly used to beat interlocking. Nor does the building official consider these interlocking pavers to fall under the phrase "or other hardened surfaces," in a certain heartland. So, what I'm looking for, and the result of this is the city is issuing requirements with zero setbacks, and without respect for even DED easements. It's not good. This is the crux of the problem. I think we can fix it. I just need to know how we should proceed.
Thank you. Appreciate it, sir. This is the staff.
We have a whole background, Mayor, that we can provide to you. But if you'd like to, for me to do that with a memo, and you all can let me know if you want it on the agenda.
That'll be fine.
But there's, there's a big background for that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it. Louis, thanks for your...
The mic's still open for non-agenda items? Here, none. I'll close it. Thank you, everybody, for your comments tonight. Move on to city council comments.
I don't really have anything to say.
Thank you.
I have none.
I have none.
And I'll do that also.
I'll be brief.
Okay. Moving on to city attorney's report.
Nothing.
City manager's report.
I'll be brief. I got a little bit. We do have the Ocean Reef Beach Festival this coming weekend from 10:00 to 5:00. The city sustainability board will have a booth at that event, so we have to see you there. I did receive an email from Ron and Barb Leonard thanking Officer Anderson for his professionalism. I also received a memo from Chief Pearson thanking the fire department for their efforts in assisting his father, George Pearson, after returning home from a medical procedure. I want to let you know that Senator Mayfield will be having her open house December 4th from 2:00 to 5:00 at her Melbourne office, at Melbourne City Hall, if you all would like to attend. I wanted to remind you that December 17th, the city employee luncheon is scheduled for the middle of the day, so it starts at 11:30.
Set on here.
I will send you, no, I'm sorry, I'll send you an email.
Yes.
And then also, December 6th is Curry Properties. They purchased the property at the corner of Jackson and South Patrick, right in front of the, you know, the old bank.
Yeah.
The Curry Properties is having their, like, kind of opening Christmas party on December 6th at 5:00. So, I think it'd be great if the city council could stop by and see them.
December 6th?
Yes.
At 5:00. And the first one you said, Debbie May...
Senator Mayfield is December 4th, from 2:00 to 5:00. And that's open to the public, too, by the way. Senator Mayfield's open house, and it's at Melbourne City Hall on December 4th between 2:00 and 5:00 PM. It's a holiday kind of open house event. And you'll be able to see her and her staff will be there. And then I wanted to let you know that you'll see surveyors right now between Rosada and Temple, and then on Temple between Elm and De Soto. So, it'll be, I'm sorry, you'll see surveyors right now. You'll see them at Elm between Rosada and Temple, I couldn't ruin my own handwriting, on Temple between Elm and De Soto. And that is the preference, or the beginning of the stormwater replacement program that we have starting this coming year. So, the surveying's being done, the bids will be going out later in the, in the beginning of the year, and then hopefully the work will start in the spring or early summer. Okay? And then I have one action item. I have received a request from the Florida Green Financing Authority Board of Supervisors. I serve on that board, and they, we've created a process to have an alternate board member, and I'm requesting council to approve Julie Finch, my assistant, for this position. Julie's obviously approved herself to be more than an admin assistant, and she's more than capable of taking up this position.
Thank you. I have a motion.
So, move.
I have a motion by Councilman Brymer.
Second.
Second by Councilman Osmer. Since it's an action item, I'll open it for public comment. Here are no public comment. Back to council. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Julie does a great job. Great choice.
Yep.
Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Vice Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Courtney, is there anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Oh, one thing real quick. December 16th, open house, fire department, right?
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
That's, uh...
Got you. Again, I'm sorry.
Six, six o'clock, if I'm not mistaken. Six?
Six.
Oh, I have a question. Can we get a schedule on Facebook or on the website for the Santa on the fire truck?
Today.
It's, okay, okay.
Great.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions for the manager? Here are none. Move on to agenda item seven. Discuss take action on transfer of funds from the Advanced Life Support Trust Fund for fire department equipment and program needs. Chief?
Yes, sir. I'm just asking permission, the fund is $31,000 from our ALS trust fund. There's several items that the fund needs to address. We take time to address these items over a few years because it's longer than we really need to. As I addressed in there, I'm asking for funds for uniforms for furniture. Right now, in our furniture bay area, we've got two sets of furniture that have hand-me-downs, or just given to us by firefighters that we replaced it. Another gentleman calls me, he's going to throw it away, and we wanted a rock replant. We're needing a conference table with a more professional look, mattresses, a lot of mattresses are very easy to replace, if you guys draw those. So, I'm just looking, we have one more thing, it's a vehicle, trying to modify a vehicle to make it more user-friendly and user-friendly needed for. If we can make some modification of that, we can say we can extend my vehicle.
Great, thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to authorize the expenditure of up to $31,200 from the ALS trust fund to meet specific equipment and program needs of the fire department.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Osmer. Discussion?
Oh, I've been in there. They definitely need some new furniture.
Hey, I've sat on that recall.
Oh, yeah.
It needs to go.
It needs, yeah.
I got lawn furniture better than that.
I didn't think you guys needed anyplace to sit, because you're always moving.
We do hear the sirens.
According to the police department, they don't.
Yeah. I can tell you, I did, when they sent this, I did some figuring. They spend about a third of their life there. They sleep there, you know, it's a 24-hour year there. And, you know, they need the right equip. I mean, it was great going over and seeing your guys' work and how they handle the fires and all, but equipment to me is a safety thing and what I learned, and we really need to make sure they're, they got what they need. So, thanks. At this time, open up for public comment for agenda item seven. Here are no public comment. Back to council, further council. Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to agenda eight, discuss take action on emergency purchase for air conditioners.
Thank you, thank you.
Alan or...
No, we're just, it's, this is an after-the-fact. You all know that the air conditioning went out in the Civic Center. We replaced it with a new system in the amount of $14,797. Unfortunately, it happened right before the election, and that's a voting polling station, but we were able to help work that out. But we did have to replace it. There was nothing else we could do about it. So, unfortunately, we had to come to you for approval afterwards, but I did talk to all of you.
Sounds great.
I'll make a motion to approve the replacement of the Civic Center air conditioner by complete air and heat in the amount of $14,797.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Osmer. Further discussion? This time, open up for public comment on agenda item eight. Here are none. Back to council. Here are no further. Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Moving on to agenda item nine, and at this time, I'll open up a public hearing. Discuss take action on ordinance number 1168. Jim?
Ordinance number 1168, in ordinance of the city of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, allowing conditional use for a place of worship in Light Industrial Zoning District for property located at 1227 South Patrick Drive, Regency Center, for units 111 and 120 only, the square footage of which is 3,121 square feet plus or minus, providing conditional use solely for the applicant church for the beach, providing for termination of conditional use upon vacation of units by church for the beach, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. It's the second reading of ordinance number 1168.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1168 on second reading.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilman Brymer, second by Councilman Osmer. This is the second reading. Further discussion from council?
Nope.
Here are none. At this time, public comment on agenda item nine. Here are none. Back to council. Lenore?
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilman Osmer?
Yes.
Councilman Brymer?
Yes.
Mayor Patino?
Yes, motion passes. Okay, moving on to agenda item 11, which is the proposed agenda for our next meetings. Please look at the date time for the first one, so we need to certify the election so we can get rid of Osmer.
Thank you.
We can do it tonight if you want.
So, that meeting's at 6:45, and then the agenda for our regular meeting for the fifth at 7:00 is attached. Some things I would like us of the council to look at, we're going to elect the vice mayor, the Space Coast League of City Delegates, which are usually Courtney and I. We need a South Beach Coalition, Space Coast Transportation member there. Would you like to take that?
Yeah.
So, there's some things we need to take a look at. And then also, we need to liaisons to board.
In the past, we've also done it in January. If we want to get it in December, we can do that as well.
It might be good for, to put it in the agenda packet so newer council members know.
Already take a look at it.
Right, yeah, to look at the days and times so everybody can figure out what they want to do. And I have time to go between and make sure that people can do what they need to do.
Yeah, and then if we don't put it on, then we can do it on the January, so make it there so we can see it.
Yeah.
Also, look here, on the December 19th meeting is canceled. Okay, that's, usually don't only have one, okay? And the other thing I want us to take a look at, and we can do this December 5th, but we're here doing it now, is the, this January meeting is January 2nd, Wednesday, which is going to make it more difficult for staff since staff is no longer, or not in on a lot of that weeks, the holidays, you know? So, they would have to come in, get that packet ready. Our suggestion would be, Courtney, if you agree, is there's five Wednesdays. So, if we went the...
The 9th and the 23rd.
The 9th and the 23rd. Is that suitable for everybody?
I mean, you just, we would have to move the sustainability board, but that's fine. We can do that.
I just think it'd be tough for the second. And if we don't meet, then our problem is we won't have met for over a month.
Yeah, Lenore would probably appreciate not having to do a packet right after Christmas.
Right, that was my thinking. Okay, is that satisfactory?
Good for me. What do you think, Steve?
I like it.
No, but wait, you're supposed to be coming to every meeting now, giving us a hard time. I thought that was the plan.
Just as a reminder for dress code, you want to...
Oh, yes, thank you. Dress code for our next meeting.
Right.
Coat and tie, you know, nice... Okay, that's, we only have one, okay? And the other thing I want us to take a look at, and we can do this December 5th, but we're here doing it now, is the, this January meeting is January 2nd, Wednesday, which is going to make it more difficult for staff since staff is no longer, or not in on a lot of that weeks, the holidays, you know? So they would have to come in, get that packet ready. Our suggestion would be, Courtney, if you agree, is there's five Wednesdays, so if we went the, the 9th and the 23rd? Is that suitable for everybody?
I mean, you just, we would have to move the sustainability board, but that's fine, we can do that.
I just think it'd be tough for the second. And if we don't meet, then our problem is we won't have met for over a month.
Yeah, Lenore would probably appreciate not having to do a packet right after Christmas.
Right, that was my thinking. Okay, is that satisfactory?
What do you think, Steve?
I like it.
No, but wait, you're supposed to be coming to every meeting now, giving us a hard time. I thought that was the plan.
Just as a reminder for dress code, you want to?
Oh, yes, thank you. Dress code for our next meeting.
Right.
Coat and tie, you know, nice dress, send Sam back to Walmart.
Can we vote on the mayor wearing socks?
I will have, I got the one pair. So, yeah, with the dress up.
That has never been washed.
Okay. So anyway, it's a dress-up meeting, and, you know, you can pick who you want to do the thing, it'd be great. And then Dominic will do two swear-ins and we'll get Steve out of here, and it's be a short meeting. We'll miss you, Steve. Okay, moving on to agenda item 12, the minutes.